Good morning, good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good, all right. I'd like to welcome everybody here to our regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council, uh, June sixteenth, twenty twenty. We're gonna have our invocation by Reverend Cunningham and our pledge of allegiance by Counsel Hilliard. If everyone could please stand.
Good morning, council staff. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for another awesome opportunity to give you all the glory and all the praise. We pray this morning, Heavenly Father, that you will uplift the hearts and the mind of those who are making decisions on behalf of others. We pray, Heavenly Father, that right now you will instill inside of them great direction, great leadership, and most importantly, a spirit of love. For we know that this nation is suffering from various pandemics, ranging from racism, from our medical, and also that pandemic caused sin. We know, Heavenly Father, you have delivered us and we're thanking you right now. We celebrate your anointing grace as you continue to bless this nation, bless this city, and bless this world. For it is you, Jesus Christ, I pray this prayer. Amen, amen, and amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, in the best of the good, in the name of Jesus Christ. Good morning, good morning, Mr. Clark. How are you?
Good.
Good. Call roll, please.
Counsel President Pro Tem Alexander.
President here.
Counsel member Hilliard.
Present.
Counsel member Hoyt.
Present.
Counsel member O'Quinn. Counsel member Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counsel member Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Counsel member Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning. Counsel member Abbott. President Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Um, minutes. I don't have my book in front of me. Are there minutes?
Not really.
Okay. All right. Uh, real quick, um, we're gonna do a little shuffling in and out. We have a busy day ahead of us with various committee meetings. Um, Mr. Hoard, are you ready for your?
Yes.
Presentation. Okay. We're gonna suspend the rules for a presentation. We're gonna do a, uh, Counsel Hoard's presentation. We have Mr. Matthews and also we want, uh, to have Reverend Cunningham and some, uh, just afterwards, I'm just giving the order in reference to, uh, what we've been dealing with, with the killing of, of, of Mr. Brooks in Atlanta. So, you wanna go ahead and start us off?
Yes.
Okay. If you wanna leave it down there, Counsel Hoard. As a new court, I'll make sure you get plenty, I'll make sure you get plenty more. Yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, of course. Ms. Hoard said, "Don't bring nothing home but some money." So. Uh, let me say good morning to, to you as President and to this August, um, and the present Pro Tem and to this August body. Um, I want to pause this morning and wanna thank you and to the mayor. Um, I don't know if he's out in the hall or here, but wanna say, um, what a great friend Melvin has been, um, uh, to this city and certainly to me. Um, he and I matriculated at Miles College together. Uh, he had this big old blue Fury, like a space spaceship. And, um, that's how we got around. We didn't have, you know, we were all poor, but he, he had, uh, a car and I didn't. And we, that's how we traveled, the T, south, and all these other places around. But, uh, Melvin has been a, a great example, uh, when one puts his mind to something, uh, that he can achieve great things. And so I am just really honored that I get a chance to celebrate, uh, not only my friend, uh, for life, my former church member, as well as my fraternity brother. Uh, he has served with valor and I wanted to present he, uh, with a, uh, resolution this morning. And if you would indulge me as I read it, uh, but we thank God for, uh, what he's doing in his, in his life and his family's life. And, uh, and of course, he'll introduce his family, um, after this. But I wanna read this. It says, "Whereas across our city and state are inspired by and indebted to our noble firefighters who exhibit courage and bravery every day in their course of their duties, firefighters exemplify the power of human compassion and the strength of American spirit through actions of the most heroic magnitude, their sacrifices, their selfless dedication merits tributes and recognition by all of its citizens. And whereas on June the tenth, two thousand and twenty Battalion Chief Melvin Brown was named the next Fire Chief of Daphne, uh, Fire Department in Daphne, Alabama, the council of the city of Birmingham is justly proud to congratulate him on this occasion. For thirty-one years, he's served with dedication and valor as a member of the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service Department. His education development began at Phillips High School where he graduated in nineteen eighty. He matriculated at Miles and earned a BA degree in communication. He continued his study at Lawson State Community College where he earned an associate degree in fire science. Currently, he's pursuing a master's, a public administration, uh, degree from Columbia Southern University. And whereas Battalion Chief Brown has consistently demonstrated a level of commitment, dedication, integrity, professionalism, which defines the task of fire protection. In nineteen ninety-nine, he became the first fighter firefighter in the history of the city of Birmingham to complete the police academy, being duly certified as a firefighter and a peace officer. During his career, he was named Employee of the Month on three occasions. He has served as a captain of the Fire Investigation Bureau and currently served as the Battalion Chief of Logistics Division. He has also served as Battalion Chief of Communication and Public Education. He is a proud member and former president of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, Omicron Lambda Chapter. And whereas his civic, uh, his affiliation and civic organization are varied, he is a volunteer for Big Brothers Big Sisters of Birmingham, the March of Dimes, and the Better Basis. He is a football official. He didn't play none, but he can officiate. I know. He's a basketball referee, um, a baseball umpire, and having the honor of officiating Alabama's Alabama High School Football Super Seven Championship in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen at Auburn University. For several years, he's played an integral role in District Eight Party With A Purpose Annual Event. And with him throughout his, uh, throughout has been his wife, uh, Ms. Natalie Christine Kelly for twenty-five years. Their children, Melvin, uh, Kristen and Melanie, and seven grandchildren of whom share and rejoice in his achievement. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Birmingham with Mayor Randall L. Wolfen concurring congratulate Battalion Chief Melvin Brown on being named the next Fire Chief of Daphne Fire Department in Daphne, Alabama, and may the many outstanding contributions to his profession serve to inspire those who will follow in his footsteps. Presented this sixteenth day of June two thousand and twenty at, uh, at the recommendation of Stephen W. Hoyt. Uh, let's give him a round of applause.
Hold on, Counsel Hoard. Counsel Hoard, the mayor needs to, needs to continue on. Yes, sir, before, everybody. Good morning, Mr.
Morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Counsel Hoard. Good morning to the entire council. In conjunction with, um, Counsel Hoard, I just wanted to add a very, very brief few words in honor of my fraternity brother and Battalion Chief Melvin Brown. It's very quick. And it states, "I take great pride in saluting employees who have excelled in their su- success and careers. You have given your all to make your time with the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Services a success. And now you will work to make a difference with the city of Daphne as its new Fire Chief. As you prepare to leave your Birmingham post on July seventeenth, I want you to know that we've appreciated your thirty-one years of service for the city. You've accomplished so much during your time with the Fire Department. Very, serving in various positions such as Battalion Chief of Logistics Operations and Public Education Divisions, where you developed a system for tracking all uniforms and office supplies. And as Battalion Chief of Fire Communications Division, you led the design of the first ever training program for dispatchers. While with Birmingham Fire and Rescue, you have demonstrated an impressive work ethic and dedication. It is with esteemed honor that I congratulate you on how you have helped put people first. And I extend my appreciation, deepest gratitude for your years of remarkable services. Thank you." Well, that's, uh... Well, first of all, let me, uh, let, let me, let me say thank you to, to... Thirty-one years. I never saw it coming. I remember, uh, February twenty-seventh, two thousand, I'm sorry, nineteen eighty-nine, when I, when I started this journey. I set a goal that first day, 'cause I looked around and, and, and I admired, uh, Chief Tony Jackson, but my goal was to be the first African-American Fire Chief of this department on that day. Uh, because one thing that I've always done is that I've always, uh, tried my best to, to reach the top and have the greatest impact on whatever, uh, industry or, or establishment that I was, of, of which I was a part. Somebody give me some tissue, please. But, uh, I appreciate the, the citizens of the city of Birmingham for... for allowing me to serve them for... And I got my hands sanitized, too. For allowing me to serve them for thirty-one years and, and four months. I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. But, you know, I had a meeting yesterday with, uh, Fire Chief Corey Moon and, you know, I, I congratulated him on, on being the leader of this great organization. Thanks, brother. Good fraternity brothers all over the place. And, and so, that, one thing that I do know is that I believe that I, I, I leave this Fire Department in a better place than when I found it on February twenty-seventh of eighty-nine. I know that it's in his excellent, excellent hands with administrative, uh, team of Chief Moon, Deputy Chief Purifier, and Assistant Chiefs Brown, Tall Brown, Lamont, and Williamson. I, I know that. I leave a lot of friends. I've made a lot of friends here with this business and, and again, I just appreciate them for being, being here. But, uh, again, I, I said to Chief Moon that I, I did want this job and I didn't get it and I was disappointed for a couple of days, but I had to lean on, on my understanding of God. And God said, "This wasn't your job." God said, "This job was, he put it on the mayor's heart to name Fire Chief Mo- Corey Moon as the Fire Chief." And I had to appreciate that. And I do. But God told me, I, he had a mission for me. And he had to just show it to me and I know that. I was applying for jobs and I've had interviews. I've been a finalist, semifinalist for several jobs and thought I had them and they, and just weren't meant to be. And so, uh, man, I, this, this, this crying stuff, you, you, Melvin, you gotta cut that out. But, uh, again, I say to my, I say to you that, uh, I was, I was made for that job. I was, I was made for, to go to Daphne, Alabama. You know, I was, I was born to two parents who, who didn't put up with a lot of mess, but they, they held their children, all six of us. And I, I, I got three sisters here with me. Sister Jessie's my oldest sister, Kathy's a middle. She retired February fourteenth from the city. And Sandra still works with the city. And, uh, I have to mention my cousin Fay is over here. But, you know, my parents held us accountable and made us responsible and told, told, told all of us the value of hard work and trying to stay out of trouble and trying to do the right thing. And, uh, not only that, you know, he, 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 he grew, he grew me up in a city and in a, in a, a neighborhood of Norwood where everyone, you know, we made each other accountable and we had friends. You had to be tough to grow up in Norwood. You had to have tough skin. So that helped me in where I'm going. Uh, he sent me to Phillips High School, a high school that was known for greatness and was at one time the high school of the elite in Birmingham, so that I could have that in me as well. And, and I thank the God for, for allowing me and leading me to my beloved Miles College, a school that had an important role in, in the civil rights era. And to understand that history of that school also taught me some lessons. And he led me to a fraternity that built leaders.
Yes.
A fraternity who strives to build leaders and was, and that was a great thing. And he, and one of the, not one, the first friend that I met at that college was this gentleman right here. The first friend I ever had, first person that, that came, that sat beside me in the first class, walked in, in a military march, mind you, and sat by me. We thought he was instructed, 'cause he had a mustache, too, so. But, uh, I appreciate that and, but God said, "You know what? You gonna need a woman beside you." Y'all, y'all don't know. She, she's put up with this knucklehead kid for, for twenty-five years this past May. And, and he gave me three children to raise. And to show them what it is, what it means to, to be a good citizen and, and to work hard and, and to strive for excellence. So, I take all of that with me. And the training that I had, that I've had in thirty-one years and five months in this great organization, Birmingham Fire Rescue Service. I appreciate the friendships. I appreciate everything that I went through. Uh, I appreciate being able to be put in positions to make change. So, uh, Chief Moon, I know you're gonna do what you're supposed to do. I, I, I know it. There's no doubt in my mind that you're gonna lead this department to even higher levels. Uh, so, I say thank you to the council for this moment, to allow me to stand here and, and take up this time and ramble. But again, uh, you know, uh, before I, let me finish. I wanna thank my daughter Melanie, this is the youngest, for being here, uh, and all of my family members and all of the guys, Fire Service fraternity brothers, Daryl Cunningham, Andrew Cunningham, my first roommates. I, I stood next to Curtis Bass, uh, during Police Academy. I, I'm, I'm sure there's some more people that I want that I, so let me stop now. Charge it to my head, not my heart. Again, I gotta wipe this old crying nose again. But, uh, and I won't touch the podium. But, uh, I, I appreciate... Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Put some of that on my hands, too. But, uh, again, I just wanna say thank you to the council, uh, and Counselor Woods, Counselor Williams, President Counselor Parker, Counselor Abbott, uh, even my friend Lee. Just longtime a- associates, my fraternity brother and Counselor Hilliard. We've been knowing each, uh, Counselor Ward E., a, a friend of mine and sorority sister to my wife. Uh, and Counselor Quinn. And it's just a pleasure to sit here in front of y'all. Counselor Smithman, uh, and your father's a great man. And let him know that I said that, too. You, you, you already know what your father's about. And my fraternity brother as well, so, uh, but, uh, been knowing Hilliard since nineteen eighty-two when we both, uh, at different colleges, we, we, we found this fraternity called Alpha Phi Alpha. But, uh, again, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve this city. God bless us all.
Just, just one last comment, and that is, uh, Melvin is an admonition. So not only is he intelligent, but he's smart academically. And I can tell you the years that we matriculated at Miles College, I was trying to figure out why this fellow didn't have any books. But at the end of the semester, he get exempt from the exam. He wouldn't have to take the exam. He was just that smart. And so then, then years later, I said, "Melvin," I said, "I'm always in awe about that." He said, "Hoard, I didn't have no money to buy no books." So I had to get it in the classroom and had to retain it so that he could, uh, do well academically. And so I, I'm just proud. He, he really makes me very, very proud, uh, to call him my friend and my fraternity brother. And, uh, I just appreciate you, appreciate your family. Uh, you all have been wonderful to me. You know, I was a kid from the outside and his mother and father took me in and his family, and we like sisters and brothers. And so I just thank God, uh, for you and what you've been able to accomplish. And, uh, and we do, um, know that Chief Moon is gonna do an excellent job in his capacity. And so, uh, but I wanna, uh, thank you for allowing me, 'cause, you know, humility is not in the given, it's in the receipt.
Yes, absolutely.
Humility speaks to one being able to allow you to honor them. That's what humility is. And he was humbled enough to allow us to honor him this morning. So I thank you for your humility.
Counselman Hoard.
Yes.
Yes, uh, Counselman Hoard, to my fraternity brother Hoard, Stephen Hoard, and of course to Melvin, I am so proud of you, Melvin. You have always exemplified the best of Alpha Phi Alpha. Uh, you know, of course, we both crossed in nineteen eighty-two. And, uh, I remember meeting you, Melvin. I remember going to regional conventions with you. You've always given your best to everything that you've done. And I think that it's a pleasure and an honor when your daughter and your family gets a chance to see that and see that nothing is impossible. You've achieved every dream you've gone after. That's an amazing accomplishment. I am so proud to be your fraternity brother. I'm so proud to be, for us all to be standing here together. And I just realize that God is not finished with you yet. There are so many more things that you're going to accomplish and you're going to do. I want to be there with you, beside you as we achieve that. And we have so many brothers in the room here today, you know, I, I'm, I'm always, I love Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. So I, I want you to see how many of these brothers are here. I know you called our names, but to Daryl and all of the rest, and I think I saw Drew back there. I just want you to hold up the sign of the House of Alpha and say that we are here, we are in the room, and we love you, brother, and we love everything you've done. Alpha Phi Alpha, oh, six! Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. All right. Um, all right. Thank you, sir. Um, Reverend Cunningham, I'm gonna call you up for something else, but I know you have a word for this, so we're gonna... Reverend Cunningham? I, I just...
And we have a little small reception for...
Okay.
Melvin in Conference Room A. And, uh, if you, uh, matriculate in, don't stay. Get your cake and go.
'Cause we need you back up here, Dr. Hoard.
I don't need the mayor resting me, um, 'cause we are not...
Oh, now, we're gonna be all right.
... social distances, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, thank you all. Thank you. Let me get your spray. We're gonna leave that. Reverend Cunningham, I know you wanna say a word for this and then we're gonna move on to our other item that I need you to make some comments on. Okay. Real quick from Reverend Cunningham.
As, uh, as, uh, Melvin said, we were, uh, roommates in college and he was at Miles. We played at the same time, same year. Uh, I learned a lot from this guy. Great guy, me, he and my brother. Uh, we had, uh, a great college experience, being around people who ha- will go oriented. I'm just thank you for the time and relationship. Bless your family. Pray for your success, 'cause I know it's gonna be successful. Amen.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. All right. All right, we have two quick more presentations. One from, from Mr. Matthews and one for Reverend Cunningham. Are you gonna hand the other one real quick? And you'll be right after that. Is okay, Ms. Matthews? Okay. All righty. We have, uh, two more resolutions, presentations. As you know, this past weekend, uh, we experienced, uh, another fatality with, uh, Mr. Brooks, uh, being killed in Atlanta this weekend. And I asked, uh, Reverend Cunningham to kind of give us a perspective. We always, in times like this, we, we, we turn to our faith leaders. And so Reverend Cunningham, uh, if you could share a few words and, and we're gonna do a resolution and, and recognize Mr. Brooks, but...
Yes. We, we just wanted everyone to recognize that in life, uh, on situation arising which we're dealing with now, uh, we can categorize three basic pandemics that we're facing. That is our pandemic that we're dealing is COVID, the pandemic of racism, which is endemic, and also the pandemic of sin. At this time, we rely on our faith, our hope and our love and our connection to Jesus Christ. And, uh, as a, uh, minister and a pastor, uh, our faith group that we are so actively involved trying to bring change, awareness and recognition, uh, courage, concern for communities. We have been able to, uh, bring a host of menaces across this city together in prayer to help resolve these issues. Faith is always our first phase that helps us to accommodate and build, uh, that trust. And this morning, uh, another great member, uh, Pastor Jackson's gonna give us an update on some areas, but we, we wanted to make sure you understand, your council president was so instrumental, he and, uh, Counsel Man Hilliard, uh, instrumental in getting, uh, that testing done for the COVID out at Legion Field. And I wanna thank him personally for that. It changed, influenced a lot of people's lives, uh, helped us to be able to communicate with the public and let them know the seriousness of this. And I can applaud the efforts that this city is doing and is continuing to do because this virus is very serious. Uh, being a man of faith, uh, we have to all rely on the healing power. Uh, just as the lady with the issue of blood touched Jesus' hymn. God blesses us with people that have healing power and must trust that his faith is guiding us. So I admonish this, this entire world, this nation, to continue to follow the direction of the medical team and professionals as they guide us through this pandemic. And, uh, we'll, we'll continue to pray, "It doesn't jeopardize your faith. It means you have great obedience." And God honors that. And we pray for a patience, a spirit of patience, and God will give us the power. And through that, we know that this situation too shall pass. Now I wanna introduce to you, uh, Pastor Lawrence Jackson.
Good morning. So much has been said already. I just wanna say thank you for what you do for our communities and, um, the fight has been, um, to continue to get these testing sites in our communities. Thank you, Counselman Parker and every council person, and thank you, Counselman Hilliard. I've seen the fight from afar and I've seen it happen because the testing was done at my church at Greater Grace. And, um, I was contacted by organizations to come there and so we fought to get in our communities and we needed. So that is the virus side of it. We have to continue to be careful. There's not a divide, and there should not be a divide with pastors as far as who goes in when and who goes in where. I think we just pray for those who go in and make personal decisions as pastor on when it's best for us to go in. I personally, um, have not decided to go in yet because I'm not in a hurry, um, until we see some numbers at a level where we are comfortable with. Um, relative to Mr. Brooks and, um, and George Floyd, we still have to fight this fight. We, we have to fight this fight. Racism, it is a disease, I'm telling you, and I thank you for what you do. The urge to stereotype is certainly present. We want to be careful not to do that. But we also want to fight this fight because we do know all lives matter, but in this instance, black lives do matter. And we have to continue to fight. Thank you for leading us, thank you for helping us. Clerage for concern for our community, that's what we're fighting for. We just demand justice, and there's no time to lay down now. We can't quit now, we're just fighting for that equality that we so much deserves. I respect all lives, but certainly the endangered species in our country is the African-American life. When you can't jog, when you can't drive, or when you can't make a mistake, or the only result may be is lose your life, and I think we have to put a handle on that.
Thank you. With that, have a resolution of honoring Mr. Brooks and all those others that have been killed by injustices in our country here. So I think, well, we make a motion that we approve the resolution honoring Mr. Rashard Brooks, who-
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, we ready, we're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you all for that, and thank you pastors as well. One last is Mr. Matthews, Mr. Frank Matthews? Come on up. As you know, we're upon our fifth anniversary of the tragic shooting that happened in South Carolina at Emmanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church. And so Matthews, we want to thank you for all that you do. So time will move for a resolution honoring you. But if you want to take a few moments, and then we'll do the resolution.
Everhi, come to the-
You got a few minutes, yes, sir, go.
Thank you so graciously, Council President Parker and all others that are here and the mayor in his absence. I would hope, President Parker, that something is heavy on my heart as well that I'd like to share. Firstly, first business, 1989, I married a young woman while I was in the penitentiary in West Jefferson Correctional Facility. And when I got out, I didn't know anything about Birmingham, originally from Cleveland and Denver. I lived everywhere, mom and daddy. My daddy was killed, my granddad was killed, my brother was killed, and I did a lot of just adoptions and all this kind of stuff. But when I landed in Birmingham, I was going to my parole board office, and I didn't know where it was at because I didn't know anything about Birmingham, but I know I had to find it because you have to check in. And I stumbled, people say, "Go that way, go that way." You had to go to Redmont Hotel next to Western Union, that's where the parole board, where you had to check in at. And I stumbled by a little ugly tree, there's a ugly tree right out there, and right out in the park. It's a little ugly tree. It's knotted up, it's ugly, I mean, you go and see it, it's black, it's dark, but yet it's green. And I was mystified by the tree. And then, Ms. Abbott, when I looked over my shoulder, there was this towering five-story monument. And I, uneducated, I didn't know too much about no Buffalo Soldiers and none of that, even though my grandfather on my mother, on my father's side worked at Redstone Arsenal, and they had Caverhill School named after the 10th Cavalry, which was the regiment of the Buffalo Soldiers there. And there's a great monument there. But anyway, to speed up my story, I looked, and I had seen the movie Denzel Washington Glory, and I seen all those things on it. I'm like, man, this thing is not right right here. But moving the story forward, in '02, Reverend Abraham Woods called my radio show when I was AGG. I was about five minutes ago and off. And he said, "Hey Frank, they about to let Bobby Frank Cherry go," and all this. And I said, "Doc, y'all know that voice of his, you remember it?" And I said, "No, sir, we need to do something, seven minutes left." And I said, "Meet me in the park," and we went. So he and Herman Henderson, and here come Reverend Abraham Woods with Reverend Shuttlesworth. I'd never met this man, never met him. And he came, we talked some strategies or whatever, buses, how we could protest. They was about to drop this case on Bobby Frank Cherry for dementia. And after we got through kind of like talking, I said, "Reverend Shuttlesworth, why you never, why y'all never tried to get this monument down?" And he said, "Frank, if we had tried to get that monument down," he says, "over 500 Confederates would have came and killed us, we had to stay focused." But I purpose in my heart that it was a burden that I would take. So when they start talking about apologies for slavery, I had Brother Horton, he got in trouble with Ms. Abbott because he brought me before the council to ask for apology for slavery. And Ms. Abbott, Ms. Abbott, she always got a way of hitting me. And when she catch, she can get slip on you, now you gotta watch Ms. Abbott. Because she got elected by the brother, by my brother, he helped her. So he helped to defeat me because he knew how I moved. But Ms. Abbott always got a punch or two. And I get you back, Ms. Abbott, but you tough now. So she said, "How can you apologize for slavery when Birmingham wasn't a city?" I'm like, "Man, who didn't educate me?" So me and Horton had to go. But then they put up a hundred-foot flag down on 65 mile marker. I said, "I'm gonna tackle this flag." So everything was the strategy to deal with that monstrosity. That didn't work, that didn't work. There was a violation, it's over a slave graveyard, it's the center point, precision point of the middle of the state of Alabama. It was 14-feet violation close to the interstate, it's a hundred-foot tall, violates how things, didn't matter. They still had it. So then all of a sudden, on this dark day, will be tomorrow, five years, is this man, Frank Matthews, born on the 10th. I born one day after the Confederate war was over and two days before it started. Started April 12th of early 1860, and it ended four years later, a day before my birthday. So I'm just mixed up in this Confederacy. So I asked my friend, appealed before this council, and Mayor Bell kicked it over to the park board. And President Parker was over the park board, and they got a unanimous decision to get rid of this monument. And y'all know what happened. So then, when a young lady got killed in Charlottesville, Virginia, they was marching on the wrong side, and I said, "What did march on the south side? They need to be marching on the mountain." So they came over here, and Dr. Bell put the black box around it, and they did what they did. But lo and behold, we know what happens. But I'm so happy, I am so happy that monument is down, I feel so free of it. And I just thank God that I could go, because every year, y'all did nothing to honor those nines in this city. But every year, would be five years, I would go with that monument, and I walk around it myself. Chris Mosley joined me the first time and Carlos Davis last year, but I walked around it seven times. I had nine lilies that represented the men, and had nine roses that represented the women. And that's what I've done. And I'm so proud that this council put together a resolution that I can take to Pastor Morris and family members there and in that church, that breaks my heart.
See, I feel so much like Floyd, because when I was 11-years-old, they put me in a county jail. They drug me out from my house, and they stung me. They took me to the city jail, meant for a week and a night. They said, "Ever, call me, nigga," put me in this, sound scarred, it's a lot of pain. And for us to acknowledge them people, one of the worst tragedies that ever happened to this country. And we in Birmingham, so. There's something else I need to say, but I can't say it, I'm just, but I need to say something about the president and the FOP. I'm gonna deal with that, but this just ain't time, thank you so much, and I apologize.
That's okay, Mr. Matthews. With that, we're gonna move for a resolution honoring Mr. Matthews and recognition of the fifth anniversary of the tragic shooting at Emmanuel African American Episcopal Church, so-
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, all right. Mr. Matthews, we'll have a resolution in this official for you very shortly. So, all right. With that, we are going to now Mr. Clerk to the consent agenda, please.
Okay, consent agenda starts on page two, I'm sorry, not two, but three actually, with items four, five, six and seven. Skip over to page four, we have items eight, nine and 10 on consent. Page five, we have items 11, 12, 13, 14 and 15 on consent. Page six, items 16, 17, 18, 19 and 20 are on consent. Page seven, items 21, 22, 23, 24 and 25 are on consent. Page eight, we have items 26, 27, 28, 29 and 30 on consent. Page nine, items 31, 32, 33, 34 and 35 are on consent. Page 10, items 36, 37, 38 and 39 are on consent. Page 11, we have items 40, 41, 42 and 43 on consent. Page 12, items 44, 45, 46 and 47 on consent. Page 13, items 48, 49, 50 and 51 are on consent. Page 14, we have item number 53 on consent, and we have two addendum items, and that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, Dr. Quinn will start, are you on the consent agenda?
Thank you, President Parker, I'm good.
Okay, Councilman Hillyard?
I'm good, Mr. President.
President Protem?
Yes, can we add item 56 on consent?
What is 56?
Okay.
That was one of the addendum items.
Okay, Counselor Smitherman?
Yes, thank you, I would like to add item 52 to consent.
Okay, Councilman Woods, Councilman Williams, Councilman Abbott, Horton, clear?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Councilman Abbott, you good?
I have two questions. One is regarding item 46 on page 12. Um, I wanted to know, it sounds like we're paying CSX for an encroachment thing. I didn't know what we were encroaching on or what we were doing to need to encroach. So I was wondering if anyone could explain that item? Anyone in the administrations could explain that item? So-
You don't have-
We can take that off consent, we can only do that once.
Okay, which item was that? Was that 41, 6?
Forty-six.
Okay, item-
On page 12.
Okay.
And then the other was item 52, this $10,000 per event that we're spending or that we're proposing to spend, is this just to cover anything we might want to do in the future?
Yes, ma'am, it's just, yeah, in the event we, as you know, we are gonna be having a ramp up as relates to COVID-19, and so we're just trying to be in a position to be able to move as we see the numbers continue to rise. We just want to be in a position to do, you know, we need to move, you know, we work with the Health Department, how do we do a better job to get, you know, more people tested? And I think we've done a great job, but we've got to do more on communicating, you know, and enforcing just people to understand what we're dealing with as relates to COVID. So yes, ma'am, it's just to put us in a position to do things. Okay.
That's wrong.
Okay, all right. So you're gonna leave both of them on consent, or you want to take 40, you're gonna leave that, 52?
No, this one is fine, just have the consent.
Okay.
The other one, I just like an answer to the question.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, Councilman Horton?
Yeah, was just trying to see when will we get an update on all the parks? I'm referencing page four on item eight.
Council President Parker, I can speak to that. Councilman Horton, this is a project that Commissioner Tyson, my father and I are working to with Whitworth Park. And so there was just a situation with the transfer of the money. So that's just what it is.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, just making sure the money is put in its proper place.
Yeah, but I was asking the chair, when can we get an update on all the parks?
Yes, sir, I was just saying about the item, what it was about.
Okay, very good.
Okay, and we will, we will get an update. I think last time we had our meeting, I think they had started, I think we started the process of going through all the parks, and I think there was still a little bit more work to go, but we can circle back on that, Councilman Horton. I think we met back in Conference Room D and E, and they gave us a snapshot at that point of where they were in reviewing all the different, the funding that was available in that category for parks under the, you know, the, I think it was $20 million appropriated. So they were going through analyzing every project. I think they gave us a snapshot at that point in that they would come back with additional information. I think there was about 400 or 500,000, I think, left that was available in case we needed, you know, if we needed to appropriate money to other park projects. But we will get that updated report, but I think they gave us that report a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, and they still had a little bit more work to do on analyzing all the parks.
Because I thought they had already done the assessment.
Well, they did, I think there was still some more, I think there was a little bit more that they wanted to do on a couple of those park projects. But we can ask for a briefing at our next committee to hold meeting.
Yeah, because I want to know where McMan Park is.
You mean your swimming pool?
Right.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
So can I, an update on the park lighting? There were only certain parks that were approved for the new lighting, but we had a lot of parks that still needed it. And so, you know, I'm just wondering where we are in the process, because I see the lights on in the daytime at Best Estelle and not at night, and it's just those lights are from the house. So I'm, you know, it just reminds me that we need an update on the progress of getting all the park lighting repots.
Yes, ma'am, we will, we'll make that our next committee to hold, we'll get an update on parks overall. Because by now, we should know how much is left in the funding category and then also on the lighting initiative. And I think that was working through Counselor Smitherman, I think, and also President Protem Alexander's. There was some initial meetings, but I think through COVID, everything kind of went quiet. But now we can, we'll get that back, and we'll all work back. We'll come back to committee to hold on that, so that'll be fine. On both of, on the lights and on the actual dollars that are available for outstanding or pending projects. So that'll be fine, we'll get that set up. Okay, Councilman Horton, did you have, you had that question, but I know that you have other about the consent agenda?
No, that's it.
You're good, okay.
Mr. Mitchell's here with an answer.
Okay. Okay, okay, yes, sir, okay.
Chair, Mr. Mayor's office, to your question for item number 46, it's related to the Sixth Avenue drainage project. So we're encroaching on some land for CSX in order to finish that drainage project.
Oh, well, thank you, it can go back to us soon.
Okay, all right, that's fine, that we can go back, all right. There was one question, I guess we can deal with this at 11:30, as relates to some funding from warrants. I think there was some communication going, if we could get a response back to that, Mr. Mitchell. Okay, I think it was, I think it was something coming from Mr. McDaniels, but we can talk through that. I'm sorry, we'll just, okay, we'll discuss the budget and finances, I just wanted to- Uh, I'm sorry, we'll just, okay, we'll, we'll discuss the budget and finance, I just wanted to point it out. All right, um, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor or citizen interested in public hearings or requests. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the order, agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read, all other matters will be announced by reading the item number only, all public hearings will be announced. So we are ready for a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm a second.
Counselor Protem Alexander and Counselor Member Smith. Okay.
All right, we're ready.
Give me one second.
Okay.
All right, thanks, all right. Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Member Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Out.
Counselor Member Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes.
That vote should be up.
Okay, consent agenda passes, uh, first, I think it's three items.
Uh, one, two and three have been requested to be withdrawn by the mayor's office.
Okay, all right.
So we're at fifty-four.
Okay.
Uh, receiving the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent relative to the purchase of six-foot temporary panel, chain link fence for Lynn Park, no more action on that item and then fifty-five is the last item.
Okay.
Well, not last item, I'm sorry. Well, yes, it is.
Yeah, it is, you can read it out.
Uh, item fifty-five, a resolution setting a public hearing July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-six, to change zone district boundaries from CB two to QI one, filed by Show Engineering, representing the owner, Edward B. Lumpkin, for the property located at seventy-six eighty Crestwood Boulevard, situated in northwest quarter of section twenty-six, township seventeen, south range two west Birmingham.
Okay, all right, ready for? Move the item.
Second.
Counselor Quinn and Ms. Abbott.
All right, Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard?
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt?
Yes.
Counselor Member O'Quinn?
Yes.
Counselor Member Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Yes.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
President Parker?
Yes, okay, that item passes and we'll get ready for that public hearing on July fourteenth.
All right.
Um, did all, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, real quick, um, are there any announcements? Let's be brief on them, we've got to get ready for eleven-thirty budget and finance, so are there any?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. O'Quinn, I just want me to start, are you good? Any?
Um, I'm good.
Okay, okay, Mr. Hilliard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to do a resolution for Mrs. Brenda Paige Ward, uh, for the Juneteenth, uh, uh, director, uh, the program that we doing in the Annesley area, uh, I'd like to offer motion.
Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. President. And our weekly virtual town hall meeting will be tonight at seven-thirty PM. The calling number is five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine, five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine. Please join us, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
President Protem?
Five oh eight nine two four thirteen forty-nine.
Thank you. President Protem?
Yes, Mr. President, if we could also add to our, um, any upcoming committee of the whole meeting, if we could get a report on the progress, there was a program that was started by administration, uh, for no dumping and I think there was signage and different messaging and we're having some problems in District Seven where we clean up the day of and immediately that item goes back out and we putting up some of those signs, so I just want to see where we were with that program and, um, see if anything else we can do to move that forward. Thank you.
Mr. Smith? Okay, um, Counselor Smith?
Uh, well, is the mayor going to come up or?
Uh, no, I think he would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I just need to know the status of the Birmingham jail, like are there going to be cleaning services? I got a phone call that hot meals, it was going to be as hot meals were going to be served, so I want to know about that and have the inmates been tested.
Okay, maybe, uh, we could ask, uh, in public safety, that might be an item that perhaps you can.
Okay.
Yeah, just request it through the, uh, the public safety committee?
Okay.
This afternoon, I think they're meeting, you all are meeting this afternoon and maybe get a status report that way and then bring it back. If not, we'll do, we'll put it on our committee to hold.
All right.
If not pleased with it. Okay, all right, Counselor Woods? You good, okay, Counselor Abbott?
Now, finally, I have one thing I wanted to give a shout out to the folks in, I'm not all. Okay, yeah, I wanted to give a shout out to the people in Highland Park because the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, um, they have been having their neighborhood meetings via Zoom and they're the only ones in my district that are doing that and I just, you know, their neighborhood, it just seems so lively and vibrant even on Zoom. So I wanted to say that, you know, I admire them for what they've done, they took the initiative and jumped in there and, uh, they have, they have great meetings and it's actually fun. So it's, we're not getting to have much fun lately.
I know.
Y'all may have noticed that.
Yeah.
So, uh, it is nice that they have, uh, taken the bull by the horns.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hoyt?
Uh, I don't have anything, sir.
Okay, all right, have a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, thank you all, be safe, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, uh, we've got eleven-thirty budget and finance meeting today.